Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. So if there are any people in the hallway that need to be here, please take a seat. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin's been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, members of the public, please speak directly into the microphones so our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Please call the roll.
Before we start, Robert Shepherd and Vassim Vadas ask to be excused this evening. Cheryl Bethia?
Here.
Richard Prokanic?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joel Reese too asks to be excused. Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Az Khan, I don't see. Michael Daugherty?
Here.
And Robert Thomas?
Here. We have no minutes of resolution for American Outdoor Advertising, ZBA 2200019. We need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Michael Daugherty?
Yes.
Robert Shepherd. Robert Thomas, sorry.
Yes, alright. Second resolution, Dollar Tree Stores, ZBA 2200025.
I'll move.
Second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes. Linda Swain, ZBA 2300000.
I'll move.
Second.
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes. And we have no discussion as usual. In the hearings, it appears all of them are on the agenda or scheduled. First, Alan and Gloria Rich, ZBA 2300008. Applicant received permit to build an addition after construction found to be slightly closer to one to the side lot line than permitted at 45 Ellison Road Somerset Block 386.01, Lot 113, in the R40 zone. And we better make sure we swear this witness in right away.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you basically, I mean, the sum of the applications basically in the description that you just read. The applicant did a, in addition to the rear of their home, as you are aware, when applicants do certain types of improvements to their properties, they need to do an as-built survey after the fact to confirm compliance. When the as-built was submitted for this application, it showed a actual setback of 24.2 feet for a side yard where 25 is permitted. So, what is about 10 inches short. So, the applicant was made to come before this board to request a variance.
We'll do something a little bit unusual because of the seven or eight inches. Is there anyone in the public that has anything to say about this application or any questions? Onto the mic. Come up to the mic. This way we'll take care of any potential issues almost. Would you mind going to the podium? We need your name and address, and you'll be sworn in.
Mont Pausque, Ellison Road, 38.
Can you please raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, oh God?
I do. Go ahead. Who okayed all this, to have all this done? The inspectors, who did all this? The township, right? And now it's not right. Answer me, somebody.
Who did all what? Who?
Why is it no good now? Who okayed it from day one?
It was approved with a compliance setback. And when it was constructed, it was constructed a few inches over than what was on the plans.
Okay. Who started the construction then? Wrong way. Who started that?
Well, presumably the applicant is here, he'd have to answer that, but presumably the applicant's contractor placed the building a few inches closer to the property line than was on the plans.
So who's at fault now? This guy? Huh? Nobody knows, right? The township's at fault. Not this guy. My case is closed.
This is our way of correcting an error that happened during the construction. When it was, when the final plan was drawn after the construction, it was found to be a few inches different from where it should be. So the process is to come here and make it right.
Man, we have a few inches we're talking about here. Inches now.
Okay. I'll compliment the applicant on doing things the right way. Because someday he goes to sell a house, somebody might have an issue with that. Who knows? Because he has to put a survey in.
Because you people have the issue. You don't have the issue. Who complained about this? Who complained?
Sir, nobody complained. When an applicant finishes the project, they do what's called an as-built survey, which has a surveyor goes and confirms the measurements of where the structure was built. When that as-built survey was done, it was revealed that it was a few inches shorter. Nobody complained. This is just part of the process. And he put it a few inches too close to the property line. So the process to have that approved, if you will, is to come before this board and ask for a variance.
But everything came down to who told him to build that where it was being built? That is the bottom line.
Something happened in the construction. It isn't, he-
Obviously it did. Obviously it did.
So, no one has an issue with it. That's why we're here, to correct it.
That's why I'm here, because he should not have this issue here with you people. I'm closed. I said all I'm saying. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we're not in a position where we can pick and choose who's going to be made to comply or made not to. I admire people who come forward when something's done wrong like that, and it isn't really, the idea isn't to tie blame onto somebody, it's just to correct something that happened. Who knows? It could have been a board moved when the cement was being poured, just a complete accident. But we'll work it out. Anything you want to add?
No, I think that covers it.
Are any other people in the public who would like to ask a question or make a statement? We'll close to that. Anybody need any other facts? They are looking for a motion then.
I'll make the motion for Alan and Gloria Rich, ZBA 2300008, for, to permit him to build his addition. After construction, it was found to be slightly closer than the lot line permitted at 45 Ellison Street in Somerset Block 386.01, Lot 113, in Zone R40.
I'll second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan, oops, Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Michael Daugherty?
Yes.
And Robert Thomas?
Yes. Okay. Next time, check that tape measure. Somerset at Adrium, ZBA 230005. Sign variance in which the applicant seeks approval for height and size for a sign at 240 Adrium Drive, Somerset Block 468.01, Block 2111, in the B1 zone. This was carried from April 13th. Newspaper notification needed. Go ahead.
Good evening, John DeLuca of the firm Boris Golden Foley von Yellheim and Stahl on behalf of the applicant, Somerset Adrium LLC. As the chairman noted, this is a property located at 240 Adrium Drive in Somerset, New Jersey, Block 468.01, Lot 2111. I'd just like to place on the record that as the zoning board of adjustment for Township of Franklin, this board does have the proper jurisdiction and authority to hear this matter, and that all required notices have been published or served at least 10 days in advance of this hearing, providing all interested or impacted parties the opportunity to appear tonight. This property is in the B1 zoning district where hotels are permitted use. Currently existing on the property is a four-story, 101-room hotel that's currently under construction. This is an application for facade signs on the hotel building. One to be located on the west-facing side of the building, that will be 142 square feet in size, and the other on the south-facing side of the building, that'll be 79 square feet in size. Both signs depict the hotel brand Hampton Inn and Suites. The only variances sought in connection with this application are for sign area and sign height. With that in mind, I will have two witnesses tonight. First, you'll hear from Craig Styers, who's a qualified expert in the field of engineering, and then you'll hear from Wayne Chu as a fact witness who will explain the need for these signs. So unless the board has any housekeeping items, I would like for my first witness to join me, and please be sworn in to testify.
I do have one question. You said it's, the variance is just for the height, there is for the number of signs as well?
That's correct. My mistake. Yes. Yes, because I believe one sign is permitted and we're requesting two. That's right.
Yes.
Good evening, sir. Can you please raise your right hand? Can you please state your name for the record?
Craig Styers.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Styers, did you bring any exhibits with you tonight?
I did not, but you do have the plan on the screen up there.
That's correct. So can you just tell us about the signs, specifically their placements on the building and their measurements?
As John said, that the first sign is on the front of the building, which faces Adrium Drive. On the west side or southwest side would be over top of the main entrance. And the second sign would be on the side of the building, or above where it says indoor pool. That would be on the southwest side of the building. I think it was 76 square feet is the one, I believe, over the front entrance. Yeah, 76 square feet is on the front of the building, as you see on the screen up there. And the one on the side, and that is, I believe it's three feet high. So the one on the, that's the larger sign, I apologize. So that one is 7'4" high by 19 inches, or 19 feet wide. And the one on the side of the building is going to be 5'6" high and 14 feet wide. And that's the total of the Hampton Inn and Suites. So it's the total of all the lettering itself. And I think originally when we got the application approved, the applicant did, was proposing to have three signs. These two locations, and then also one on the opposite side. And during the application, we agreed to go down to two signs. So it's consistent with what the original approval was. And I think that the change in size is more going in line with the branding of the Hampton Inn and Suites. And, you know, they have particular sizes and specifications associated with their signage when they put them up on their buildings. So it's, we got the approval, I believe, back in 2015, so, and like John said, the building is under construction right now. And then I believe that the applicant has ordered the signs, or would like to order the signs, but has been requested to upgrade the sizing, and why we're here before you tonight.
So if I could just clarify your testimony, is it correct that when the building was initially approved, you did get approval for two signs?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And it was these two locations?
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions for my engineering expert, unless the board has any questions for him.
Anything from the board? I don't know if this is a question for you or the next person, but what clientele are you trying to draw from 287 or the other areas?
I'll leave that for the-
The next one?
Yeah.
Okay. What else? Next witness.
Okay. My next witness is Wayne Chu, if he could please be sworn in to testify. Good evening, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth, can you swear to God to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Wayne Chu. Address is, my home address of the business.
You can state the business.
Our business is 240 Adrium Drive, Somerset.
Thank you, Wayne. What is your position with Somerset Adrium LLC?
I'm the president of the company, Somerset Adrium LLC, yeah.
Okay. And can you please tell us why these signs are required?
Well, this is Hampton Inn Suites, it's a part of the franchise by Hilton. They have a brand standard, they set out different heights of the building, they have different requirement for the size of signs. According to Hilton Standard, we'll be considered, because it's a four-story, it's a mid-level height, mid-level, they require four feet lettering. That's our west end sign size is. We were able to get approved for that, and on the, as a compromise, we, on the south side, to, we applied for, approved for three feet. So that's, that's we meeting the requirement of the brand standard.
Okay. And could you please address Mr. Richards' question?
Well, we are, we are more of a business, a corporate hotel, mainly try to accommodate travelers from out of state coming for a business or leisure, but mostly the business. Adrium Drive's located in the Adrium Park. It needs visibility and direction for the travelers from out of town. And for this size of a sign, would it give certain distance of visibility? That's how the brand is calculated.
Okay, then that brings me to another question then. If you're targeting somewhat travelers, these signs you're going to be putting up, you can't see from 287, correct?
Well, travelers coming from 287 is to have to circle and run coming to the property. And it's also, it's not just using the sign to attract business, it's awesome, it's the identity of the brand, and that's why the Hilton brand has certain requirement, the size of the sign for a building. This four-feet sign, we may feel it's pretty big lettering, but put it on a large building, it's really not that, that, you know, stand out. So I think the brand Hilton put this requirement for a reason, to make sure it gives the appropriate image as well, besides just give directions.
I have no further questions for my witness, unless the board has any additional questions.
Anything?
I'd just like to clarify, so the sign that you're proposing, this is typical for the other locations? Or is it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the minimum requirement by the standard, and most, almost all, all similar hotel with this brand will have to comply to it, yeah.
Anything else?
Four, four-story.
You said two witnesses, right?
Just the two, yes.
We'll open to the public, is there anyone who would like to ask a question or make a statement? And we'll close to the public, anything you want to add?
I'll just note that, you know, based on our engineer's testimony, the two signs were approved, but they, I suppose were approved for a smaller size. So what we're seeking tonight are the variances for sign area and sign height. You heard the testimony of Mr. Craig Styers, our engineering expert, who talked about the dimension and the placement of the signs. You saw our exhibits showing where those signs will appear on the buildings. And then you heard the, from the president of Somerset Adrium LLC, the applicant, about why these signs are required for this brand of hotel. So the hotel being positioned within a business district, it's not imposing on any residential properties, it is to mark the brand of the hotel within that business plaza. So for that reason, you know, we would submit to the board that these variances are appropriate and warranted, and we would appreciate your approval tonight.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have one last clarification. So you previously were approved for two signs? So you're, the variance, you're asking for an additional sign? Because I have, I see on the application, it says the number of signs is one, and the proposed is, are three. So I did see reference to a welcome sign?
The welcome sign is also on the plan. This would be the welcome sign. Well, can you tell us about the welcome sign, if anything? Craig?
Yeah, it's the welcome sign.
Yeah, the welcome sign is located just above the, I guess it's the canopy, in front of the entrance. And- I'm looking at the application now, you're correct, the requirements are the number of signs is one. And we are, I guess, if you add the welcome sign, it would be three. So as I said before, the Hampton Inn and Suites signs and their locations were approved as part of the original application. So that, for example, over the main entrance was that location, and that sign was, I believe, I forget the exact dimension, but it was 70 square feet. And then the same thing on the one on the side of the building, they were both the same size, they're both 70 square feet. I don't think we did have the welcome sign originally, so that is something new. So now these signs will be bigger, but in the same location as originally approved, over top of the main entrance, and as you see there on the side of the building. So it's just really, the additional welcome sign is an additional sign, and then the signage on the building itself, up near the top, is a greater dimension vertically, and the square footage is greater than the original approval.
Okay. And is the welcome sign, is that part of, is that something new for Hampton Inn's, or having the welcome sign there?
Yeah, the welcome sign is part of the requirement as a brand standard. Each Hampton has to have a welcome sign, but it's very, it's really small, and that's why we probably missed when we asked original approval, when we approved the plan. It's a 12-inch, 12-inch by 6-inch, so, 6 feet, yeah. Yeah. So one foot by six foot, put on the protocol here, just a welcome. It's not an identity sign, it's just, I guess, welcome sign.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else?
I do. So is the testimony being provided for the justification of the signs because Hampton wants it? I think it's the brand standard, so essentially-
What was approved was the standard previously though, right?
I would have to ask my witness if that's the case.
Well, this original plan was approved five years ago. I don't really remember if that was the same requirement, but it's current standard is for that.
No, I understand, but if five years ago it was approved and it was appropriate for the size of the building, why does it need to be bigger now?
I just mentioned that I don't recall what was the requirement for that time. It could have been, at the time, five years ago, the brand standard was only required.
But would the brand not review local ordinances?
A brand standard is set for all hotels and all brands. Yeah.
And is Hampton, is Hampton Suites Inn's a national brand?
It's international standard, yeah. It's international brand, have hotels all over the, all over the world.
We see sign variance requests all the time, but there's typically a justification for why you need to exceed requirements, and not just because Hilton wants it?
Well, that's justification, it's a part of it, it's a brand standard, but it's also proportionate to the building, the size of the building, and the ordinance for the size of, it's, I guess, one standard for any type of building.
So, so I'm wondering, so for other Hampton locations of this size, are the signs the same size?
Yeah, would it require this size, yes. That's the brand standard, yes.
I don't like to buy your case, so to speak, for you, but I do remember bits and pieces of this when it was approved before, but is it possible, the justification then and now, may have been, you're not attracting traffic off 287. People coming to your inn are probably directed there by someone, or go online and they're coming in this area and get a reservation for Hampton Inn Somerset. What I do think happened also the last time, where this hotel is tucked away on Hampton, on Adrium Drive, when you pull in off Davidson Avenue, these two signs actually, at least one of them provide guidance to the person going there who could potentially have a little trouble finding it. Again, if that's a justification, say something, I don't know, but I remember that these, these were approved for a reason. But they, again, they were a little smaller, I realize that.
Yeah, I mean, and I agree, I mean, like you said, we're kind of refreshing our mind in the first round of testimony, and I think that's one of the reasons that we got rid of the third sign, because the third sign really faces the double tree, so you really won't see it at all. So the most important ones were the ones that are in these locations. One facing south. So that, that distance, as the chairman said, is that if, your path most likely coming off 287 would be coming up World's Fair, and then- And then, uh, immediately, uh, you have Napoleon Drive, which is kind of that cul-de-sac that would lead into where the, the hotel is, but you can't get there. So that sign right there that you're looking at would be the, kind of the identifier as, you know, you gotta be looking for it. But you could see it coming up World's Fair and, you know, if you're looking down Napoleon. The second opportunity would be you get the end of World's Fair, you turn onto Pierce, and then the right-hand turn into Dave, um, Atrium, and that is a good distance away as well. Um, but you can s- you know, with that larger sign that you see right there would be the one coming in from Atrium off of Pierce Street, which is at, I would say, at least fifteen hundred feet away, uh, from that building to the intersection. And then the last turn would be coming in off of Davidson, coming down, uh, Atrium Drive. And then you would have to get really down past the, the double tree in order to see that identifier right there. So again, that front sign probably would be more appropriate to be a little bit larger because of the distance from those, um, those roads you're coming off of. And then that side sign would be the identifier if you were coming up World's Fair Drive. And I think that was part of the discussion in the original approval.
Okay, I hope that might clarify things a little bit. I don't want to be in a position of defending the applicant, but, uh, it did get an approval. It's a commercial enterprise in a business zone, and wonder of all wonders, it's not another warehouse. So I, in terms of the discussion, uh, before a motion, I would be in favor of this. Are there any other questions or anything anyone needs to know? What we did before, should we do it again? Uh, we'll open to the public again because we did discuss, uh, a third sign. So if there's anyone out there who has a comment or a question, that's the... Okay, we'll close. And now hopefully, uh, try and conclude. Anything else you want to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Anything from the board? Anyone want to present a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Somerset Atrium LLC, uh, docket number ZBA dash two-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-five for the three signs they requested. Need a second?
I'll second. Cheryl? Cheryl with you?
Yes.
Richard Porcanic?
No.
Alan, uh, you have to give the reason why, Rich, please.
Um, certainly. Uh, I just don't believe enough testimony was provided as to, to support the claim for the need for the larger signage. I'm not saying the justification isn't out there. I just don't believe it was presented tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Michael Darty?
Yes.
And Robert Thomas?
Yes. Good luck with it. This is the building that's been up for years, right? Finally get finished.
Thank you very much.
Gabriel Mercado and Luzilda Mercado Espada, C variance, in which the applicant proposes to gut the existing single-story dwelling and add a full second story, as well as adding a nearly equal-sized two-story addition, converting the structure into a duplex at eighty-five Henry Street, Somerset, block one-seventy-four, lot thirty-eight point oh-one in the R-seven zone.
Good evening again. John DeLuca of the firm Boris Golden Foley Vinyel Hyman and Stall. On behalf of the applicants Gabriel Mercado and Luzita Mercado Espada. The subject property is eighty-five Henry Street in Somerset, New Jersey, block one-seventy-four, lot thirty-eight oh-one. Again, I would just like to place on the record that as the zoning board of adjustment for the township of Franklin, this board has the proper jurisdiction and authority to hear this matter, and all required notices have been published at least ten days in advance of the hearing, providing all interested parts or impacted parties the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, this property is located in the R-seven residential zone, which permits single-family and two-family dwellings. The property is situated on a corner lot at the intersection of Henry Street and Lilian Street with driveway access from Henry Street. A single-family dwelling and small detached garage currently exists on the property, and the applicant proposes, uh, to con- to build an addition and, and convert this, this house into a two-family dwelling, uh, as mentioned. And as, as mentioned, is permitted in the R-seven zone. The only variance sought in connection with this proposal is for minimum lot frontage on Lilian Street, where a hundred and fifty feet is required and a hundred feet is proposed. With that in mind, we will have two witnesses, um, Bill Chapin, a qualified expert in the field of engineering and professional planning. And then also, uh, you will hear from the applicant Gabriel Mercado. So unless the board has any housekeeping items, uh, I'd like to ask my first witness to be sworn in to testify.
Just a quick question first. This is, this application now, we're concerned with the variance on the frontage. Has, am I correct, it has, there are no issues with height of the house, the size of the house, the style or anything like that? The building part of the house, we're concerned with the variance for frontage.
Yeah, that's the only variance that, um, they identified, the only variance, um, that staff saw reviewing it. The applicant may want to touch on the fact that it otherwise complies as part of their testimony.
Thank you. Again, could my witness please be sworn in to testify?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Give us your mic.
Oh, sorry. William S. Chapin. Twenty-two Republic Row, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you, and just to make sure you keep the mic up during, uh, your, your entire testimony. We've run into that before. So, um, we do have one exhibit up. Could you just identify the exhibit that we're looking at on the monitor?
Uh, this is the site plan for the property. It shows the layout of the proposed buildings and driveways and whatnot. As it, on the right side, it's got a table that shows the compliance with the zoning regulations. And you, if you go in there and zoom into that, you'll see that except for the one front yard variance, everything else is complying. And I just want to point out too, that with the front yard variance, it's, there's two front yards. There's one, you know, one each way. They're both supposed to be one hundred fifty feet. In this case, we have one hundred seven, eighty, one hundred sixty-eight feet and one hundred feet. Other than that, one, the one hundred-foot matter, everything else complies. Height of building, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback.
So could you walk us, us through some of the more technical engineering aspects of the proposed renovation?
Okay, um, as you look at the, the structure in the middle there, there's, you see basically two boxes there. The one on the left side is where the existing house is. That house is to re- basically remain in location. It will be gutted and a second floor added to it. The other box to the, to the right of that, which is set back a little farther, is, will be a brand-new second unit, making this a duplex. The, in front of the duplex, there's an existing driveway which is being widened. On the, uh, left side for the, what's the existing building, there's going to be a new driveway to, um, serve that, the left unit. And we've got... Parking table shows that for the, uh, the left driveway, we're, we're providing, uh, we have to, we're required to provide three-point-five spaces per the RSIS. And effectively, we've got four spaces there. And the, uh... The other one has got, yeah, basically two spaces, and they were relying a little bit on frontage for additional parking.
Uh, can you tell us anything about the suitability of this site for the proposed project?
Yeah, this, the site is pretty, uh, this is basically a developed site, reasonably flat, good for, good for construction. Um, a lot of, there were a number of other structures on the site which have mostly been removed so that the new structure can be built. And what, part of, part of this whole thing is that when it comes, is the stormwater management issue where the town regulations were a minor development, so that we're not affected by the state regulations, but we are affected by the township's regulations. And what we're maintaining on this is that the area that we have, when the final construction, is going to be less than what was there up to three years ago. And we can believe that we would, because if there's no, not a sizable increase, and actually a decrease, in the impervious area that we would be, or we believe that we would not be subject to putting in, you know, water infiltration or... That is a matter that Mr. Healy brought up and is a matter of, of discussion for the board to decide if they agree with that or not.
So essentially, if I, if I could just, um, maybe clarifies, uh, your testimony about the stormwater management. Uh, in the, in the township's TRC memo dated February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, the, the township did highlight several structures that are listed on these plans as to be removed, which in fact are not existing at the current time, but were recently removed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, a- and it's our intention to, uh, use tho- use that coverage that very recently existed to, to, I, I suppose, avoid, uh, triggering the requirements of section three-thirty of the township's stormwater ordinance, which will require storm, a stormwater management system. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, if, if, if this board's not inclined to, to, um, accept that, uh, interpretation, then we would be seeking a waiver of, of the requirements of section three-thirty for stormwater management. But we, we hope that in light of the, the recent removal of those, uh, those structures, that, that we're creating more impervious coverage than does exist at this moment, that, that we, we, we could use those towards the calculations. We're not creating more impervious coverage than existed just how many years ago?
Less, less than three.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anything else that you think is worthy of note, uh, from an engineering or planning perspective about this project?
Well, just that it provide, the project comes out as it, as it is, with a fairly reasonable lot layout. And I've noticed it's got a fairly, compared to the rest of the neighborhood, has a fairly large green area compared to the building area. So I think it'll fit in nicely and complement the neighborhood.
All right. So are you maintaining that the impervious coverage that has, that was existing, that was already removed? Where, and where does that leave the total impervi- what is the remaining to- total impervious coverage?
What can you tell us?
Let, let me check. Okay, our, the total, when we're all done, will be thirty-seven thousand, or three thousand seven hundred thirty-five square feet. The amount that it is, I don't see, based on most of the structures, save for the old garage and whatnot, would have us at about... You know, thirty, three thousand six hundred eleven. So that's, we've already eliminated five hundred, you know, almost eight hundred square feet, and we are, because of those two buildings. But we're still with, within a hundred twenty-four square feet of a match.
So, um, how far are we under the, the requirement, uh, in terms of, uh, percentage for this proposal?
About point seven percent.
Okay, so, um, if I'm, if I'm correct, thirty percent is proposed and then, or, I'm sorry, thirty percent is required, and then what is proposed?
Yeah, the minimum. We're, we're going to be at twelve-point-eight percent.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you can't be at twelve percent. I think it's more like twenty-one.
I think that, that's, uh, that's how much we're, we're complying, no?
Well, that's, that's for building area.
Is that including the thousand new?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I was talking about impervious coverage.
Oh, sorry.
Right there on your chart, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's twenty-one point two percent for the total. I'm, I'm sorry.
So can you just show the board, the, the one variance is the lot frontage? So that's the, the, you have, you have two frontages, correct?
Correct.
One of them complies.
Yes.
And the other one, which is an existing situation, um, it's, it's, and I guess let me explain why this variance is popping up. Right, right now, there's one single-family home on the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in the R-seven zone, the requirement for, um, if it's a one-family h- house in the zone, the, for a corner lot, it's ninety, uh, nine thousand square foot is the minimum lot area, and you have a requirement for ninety feet of frontage. That's the width of the lot at, at the street. So this, um, what's the frontage along the side street, the current?
One hundred.
So currently, for the one, for the single-family house, it complies. They are, this zone does allow duplexes. It does allow a two-family home. So it's not a use issue, but when you convert this property from a one, one-family house to now a two, to two-family house, the minimum lot area goes up to fifteen thousand, which they comply with. But the lot width also increases to one fifty. And that one side, that one's, you know, frontage on that side, uh, street is at one hundred. So it's that, you know, it's that change from a one, one-family house to a two-family house, and the requirements for lot area and lot frontage get increased. That's why they're before you. Again, it's not a use issue. It's that frontage on the side street, the lot's not as wide as is, as it's required to be. Uh, you know, and just, since I have the mic, um, just to clarify, chapter three-thirty, which is that stormwater, this board doesn't grant relief from that. This board grants relief from chapter one-twelve. So it's going to be the township engineer who decides whether relief can be granted from chapter three-thirty or not.
So that would be a, a condition of approval that-
That's something you'd have to work out with the engineer.
Understood, thank you.
So then tell us how the variance, justify the variance for the front.
So if, let me ask you this. Uh, whi- which, which way are these, uh, this, are these dwellings positioned? Are they positioned, uh, towards Lil- Lilian Street, or are they positioned towards Henry Street?
They're positioned towards Henry Street.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Healy already mentioned it, but the, this project, uh, does meet the lot size requirement?
It exceeds it, yes.
Okay, and, um, do you see any, any detriments, uh, caused by the one-lot frontage variance?
No, I, I don't.
Okay, and, and do you see, do you see any, uh, benefits that, that this, this proposal, uh, would, would promote in, in terms of municipal land use law?
Yeah, it, it provides a, a, a reasonably sized, close-to-rectangular lot that would fit with the homes on it nicely, with the proper setbacks and all, and like, and provides a, like I said, a fair amount of, uh, yard space around it, which particularly for that neighborhood is, looks rather not, you know, is improvement.
Okay, and do you know if, if there are, um, other two-family uses in, in the zone?
I, I don't believe there are in the immediate area. I, I don't believe there are in the area.
That was my question. I presume that this house is favorable to the other houses in the area?
A favorable?
I mean...
That's, I mean, that, I mean, I...
But that's not the real issue.
It's really not really the issue here, because it, again, this is a, a zone that permits one and two-family homes, and the, the lot vastly exceeds the minimum lot area. And they, they do comply with the impervious coverage, the building coverage, the setbacks. Really, it's that, it's the, that frontage on that side street that otherwise, and just to explain so the board understands, if that lot had sufficient lot frontage, you'd never see this. This would be approved by permit, because it otherwise, it'll otherwise, um, complies with everything.
Thank you. Are there, you notice that if there are other houses in the area with frontage deficiencies? Is it the only one?
That was my question.
You know, we, we're getting bogged down, I think, where we need to focus on, you know, the variances, the frontage. And if we approve that, the house is up to the township, the building department.
So is there anything you can tell us about lot frontages in the area?
Um, yeah, I don't think there's any case of a one, of a corner lot like this having a one hundred fifty-foot frontage. And I, I could not speak to whether or not there are two-family houses that would require it or not. I, I will mention, in, I was noticing for your R7 zone, about half the, uh, half the developed land in the area is subdivided into subdivision similar to this, where you've got the twenty-five-foot by hundred-foot lots, which give you a two-hundred-foot lot depth. So when you go to do a corner lot on the thing, you're now going a hundred fifty feet along a two-hundred-foot frontage. And generally speaking, you're not going to get that with this kind of a development. Um, and if, and if you, by the time you get to the one, one hundred or a hundred fifty feet on that end, you'd end up having to buy the land to get two hundred feet, and now you're going to have a three-sided frontage situation. Um, most, you know, just about everything in the area is going with a, the base of a hundred feet from the, you know, the frontage to the back. So it's, in, in a, in a such, in a development like this, it'd be hard to get a one hundred fifty-foot, like, you know, frontage on the side street.
Any, any other questions?
I, I...
I'm just going to say, I think the real question is, so, two-story is permitted in this, uh, region, um, but it introduces the front yards, set, setback, the frontage setback. So justification...
Not, not a setback.
It's not a setback.
It ju, just, just the, the length of the frontage.
The length of this, the frontage itself?
Yeah, so, so not the setback from, from the curb, but the, the actual, from corner to corner of the lot, it's a hundred feet.
Can you show, can you show maybe graphically on the plan, um, what we're talking about here? So, yeah, and it, it can be confusing, because it, you know, there's similar terms, there's frontage, and then there's front setbacks. You know, front setbacks means that's the distance from the front property line to the house. Um, you know, the house has to be set back from that, um, front property line a certain distance. That, that this complies, this is frontage. And what frontage means, again, that's the, the width of the lot at the front property line. So, yeah, so if you can kind of show what that...
So, it's this, it's this, you see this hundred-foot, uh, indicator right here, we're talking about this corner to this corner. That's a hundred feet where a hundred and fifty feet is required.
So the lot's required to be deeper.
Whereas if this was not a corner lot, it would, it would comply, but because it's a corner lot, it, it does not comply. And also because of the two, the two-family uses.
Okay, so it's the lot size that's the issue?
Well, actually, the lot size does comply as well, but it is, I mean, it is...
But the frontage for the lot size, okay.
Correct, yeah. Just this one part, uh, this one aspect of lot size.
Really, what's resulting, part of the problem, or part of the, the thing that's creating this is the, the shape of the lot, because they have way more than enough frontage on, um, Henry, um, make sure, yeah, on Henry. So if it was more square in shape, instead of rectangular, you know, they would comply, because again, they have more, well, you know, more than enough actual lot area, that it's kind of somewhat long and narrow, and then that's creating that variance.
Okay. Thank you.
The other board.
I, I did have two, and I'm not sure if this is for Mark or for the applicant. So for RSIS, uh, they're requiring five spaces, four parking spaces and two driveways. Are you allowed to take credit for parking on a public road?
I'm going to answer that.
And then, just a follow-up to that, are we, are they permitted to have two driveways on a single property?
They're, um, they are, I think there's a requirement that they have to be a certain distance apart. I can look for that.
Thank you. If you could just testify to the actual number of cars that could fit in these driveways?
Yep, altogether, that you could park six cars on the site.
And that's because it's thirty-six feet deep, the...
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have another witness?
Yeah, so there's no, uh, further questions for our engineer and planner, that I would, I would just like to call the applicant, Gabriel Mercado.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name and your address for the record?
Gabriel Mercado, 444 Gerard Avenue, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to keep, uh, our, our testimony brief here, because, uh, obviously, Mr. Mercado is not an expert witness, he'll be testifying just as, uh, the owner of the property. But if you could just hold up the exhibit you brought with you, so the board has an idea of what this, uh, proposal will look like.
Mark, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll mark that as A1.
Thank you. And then, um, unfortunately, our, our architect, Mr. Larry Johnson, is in the hospital right now after, uh, having just undergone heart surgery. So, um, again, my, my client is in, uh, testifying as an architectural expert, but he did work with the architect on these plans. So if you just want to talk about, um, you know, what, what you're proposing, uh, for the house, I, I also have, um, I guess what we'll mark as A2, but I do think this was submitted to the board, these architectural plans that they have. So, um, so if you want to talk a little bit about the, the basement?
Sure, um, this is a two-family home duplex, they're side by side. One is set back a little bit further than the other. They have unfinished basements.
Okay. And then on the first floor?
On the first floor, each unit will have a kitchen, family room area, kind of combined with an open layout. They'll each have a more formal living space, and then also a dining room.
And finally, on the second floor?
Each unit will have four bedrooms, um, all located on the second floor. Um, the unit on the right-hand side will have two and a half bathrooms total, and currently, the one on the left-hand side will have two full bathrooms.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to tell us about your proposal?
We have, um, a two-family that is very similar to this one on 126 Main Street, which is just on the, the backside of this, and it's probably four or five homes down from that. Um, I don't want to call it a technicality, but we do meet the frontage, front set for Henry Street, we just don't meet it on Lillian Street. And had this been an interior lot, this wouldn't have even come up. Um, so I, I do think that this project keeps with the neighborhood, uh, our architectural facade, it matches in with what's currently there, uh, the other homes. And we do have lots of green space, plenty of parking, um, that's really all I can say about that.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for my client?
Questions? That's it for witnesses?
Yes.
We're open to the public then. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment or ask questions concerning this application? Come on up to the podium, uh, take your name, address, and swear you're in.
Good evening, sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you please speak into the microphone?
My name is Calvin Ramasamy, I live at ninety-seven Henry Street, Somerset, New Jersey.
You can probably move the, up a little so it's a little more comfortable. All right, are, are you going to speak?
Sorry, I, um, we're going to have one witness speak at a time, or, thank you.
Good evening, um, so, I guess you are all the board members. It's the first time I'm here, so I don't know the protocol, but, um, um, we collectively, you know, discuss this issue here concerning, um, Mr. Mercado, um, the applicant. And in our opinion, we feel that the approval of this variance to build a duplex will inevitably change the character of our neighborhood. Um, I want to stress on that, um, this will be the first duplex in Henry Street within the vicinity of our neighbors. We have like eight neighbors that are present here, some of them were unable to make it, um, for today, um, last week was, it was postponed to this week, so they have a little, you know, um, cannot really make it. So, um, our concern is that it is a first duplex, going to be built within the, you know, the vicinity of our neighbor. And, um, with reference to the applicant, he, um, purposely chose 126 Main Street, because if I'm correct, as I said, contractor that built, he's the same contractor that built that duplex. So this is going to be the second one. The first one is in Main Street, which is next to Henry Street. This one here will be at the corner of Lillian and Henry Street. Now, it will be of a great, um, inconvenience because of the size of it and the surrounding areas where the other, um, single-family homes are. They're of, not of this size, there was a smaller version, ranch, Cape Cod, and there's a one single-family, like obliquely, uh, opposite to eighty-five Henry Street, this property in question. It's a, um, two-story single-family, so there is no duplex that built within the vicinity of this said property, eighty-five Henry Street. Um, we, we do not have anything against the contractor, but in our opinion, we feel that a developer could walk in the community and purchase, you know, a land or, uh, more than one lots, and for his personal gain. We don't, you know, we don't have nothing against that. But, um, our concern is that, um, eighty-five Henry Street, um, I'm not too, um, certain with the other, um, lots by, um, my memory, but three lots that was purchased is from, um, between Henry Street and Lillian Street. And to my understanding, and I would like to have, um, confirmation from you, the board members, that, um, it's like a propose of dividing this, um, this, um, property that's being purchased within three lots. Uh, one was already sold, another, a house was built within the same vicinity from Lillian to Henry Street. I'm talking about the three lots. And presently, it's up for sale, and it's a, it's a two, it's a two-level single-family. So our concern about this duplex property here is going to be very inconvenient, it's not, it's like, it's changed, as I said before, it changed the character of the entire neighborhood. The surrounding areas, so this property, located, uh, the proposed property at eighty-five, um, Henry Street, is actually totally different, bigger in size, and I guess, um, it will definitely raise our taxes that we living around the neighbors. Um, parking, I think, uh, parking, um, we have street parking only, and I, I overheard about, uh, making provision for parking in the existing, um, or the proposed site, eighty-five Henry Street, but I don't feel that's, that might be, in my opinion, I don't feel that it will be sufficient, and it's going to kind of create a little more traffic within Henry Street, and contribute to noise with the amount of people living in that duplex. So we want to know, have some more clarity on this from the board members in terms of taxes, because I made a call today to the taxes officer's office, and, um, it's kind of leaning towards a higher taxes around eighty-five Henry Street. So, um, I mean, it's kind of like, it's kind of interesting, as I said, is of course I might come here, that, uh, applicant is being given a seat, and, you know, we, we're trying to oppose it, the plan, you know, they're kind of be nervous in coming to the podium here, you know? So in as much as I'm like the voice, because we had a discussion with it, uh, about this, um, situation, um, I guess they have, um, a few individuals who want to come up on the mic to, um, to say their names and where they're from, the property address, and what, it is, um, it is for a fact that upon all these points that I'm raising here is in total agreement with our neighboring community. And it's, uh, I want to reiterate the fact that it's, it will definitely change the character of our neighborhood. And I strongly oppose that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
If I may, if I may just briefly respond, and I, I don't want to, if, if there are going to be, uh, more, more speakers from the same neighborhood, then maybe I'll reserve my comments, but...
But I, there probably are, I think this lady wants to speak.
Okay, the, the only, the only thing I wanted to mention i- is, the, the, um, the objector did mention that he's speaking on behalf of others, and, uh, he did not indicate that he's an attorney, so it, it's only appropriate for him to speak on behalf of himself, and if anybody else does want to speak, then they should put their names and addresses on the record to be heard from.
I'm, I think I can assure you that the board heard only him speaking.
Thank you.
Name, address, and be sworn in.
Rodney, Rodney Britton, ninety-nine Henry Street.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with Calvin.
I'm sorry, just please speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, here we go. Yeah, I would agree with Calvin in far as, uh, I do believe that the duplex would change it, and if we're talking about the issue of frontage, yeah, if it was a single-family home, we wouldn't have this issue at all. So the fact that having, uh, changing it to a duplex, uh, I've been in the neighborhood for twenty-five years, and it is a bunch of single-family homes on Henry Street. I do think that even though they're looking to try and style it in that manner, it's not going to be that. Uh, I agree with Calvin as well, as far as, uh, increased, uh, traffic, uh, Henry Street from Lillian there to Hamilton Street is very narrow with the one-sided, uh, more volume is going to create more of an issue right there. Uh, I believe that is a bus stop for some of our elementary kids. Uh, in my twenty-five years, I've seen the, the neighborhood grow, and I'm not opposed to that. I just think that, like you said, when you look at a situation, you go from a single-family home, uh, street, and again, I understand right behind us, there are, there are duplexes, so I'm not opposed to that. But on our street, we have single-family homes, and to move it to the duplex, one creates the frontage issue that we're looking at, that you guys are proposing here, but also, like I said, creates, again, another family to bring in there for traffic and consideration for our street right now, which, like I said, only has one side, uh, parking right now on the street. And going through, it becomes very, very narrow, and a lot of traffic in the morning for buses and cars trying to move out for, uh, for work, so that's my issue. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, my name is Mary Ramasamy.
Do you swear to, can you raise your right hand, sorry, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your address for the record?
Ninety-seven Henry Street. Um, my biggest concern as a mom is it raises, uh, safety issues for our children. I've been in the neighborhood, I joined with my husband Kelvin and our neighbor Rodney. I've been in the neighborhood for over twenty years. Our street has been a safe haven for our kids, and I'm not speaking on behalf of, as an engineer, I'm speaking as a mom and also pediatric nurse. I work night shift, and ever since I... nurse. I work night shift, and ever since, I have nothing against Mr. Mercado moving in the neighborhood to build these big duplex, bringing in different tenants. It's okay, but our neighborhood has changed over the last couple of years because many people moving in there, traffic, too many cars in the, in the street. When I come home in the morning to sleep, I can't get sleep because there is too much traffic, boom, boom, boom. So again, I'm not an engineer, but I'm speaking in a, a mom perspective, a nursing perspective. It's not safe for our neighborhood, for our children. Footage, footage is an issue here, but at the same time, we think building that duplex will be a nuisance to our community. Safety is the number one priority for our children, and having all those traffic is going to be more nuisance, and also for weather-wise, when the rain falls, we'll have more flood in the neighborhood. But that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll...
Ms. Smith?
Can you, um, see, can you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your address for the record?
96 Henry Street.
Say close to the mic, please.
Okay. My biggest concern would be safety. A structure as large as that in size on the corner, it would be hard to view any traffic coming from the Main Street direction. We already getting a lot of traffic on Henry Street due to the Hamilton, Hamilton Street District, all of the new buildings that they're building there. It seems to be too much traffic already in the area. So I do see this as a safety concern. There's a bus stop there, there's small kids getting off the bus. I just wish we could consider that, consider the safety of the neighborhood. That would be it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close, are you, come on.
Can you please state, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Ashley Huggins, and my address is 78 Henry Street. So I'm right across. My concern is, it's about, like, the bus stop is right there, and I know that we mentioned that it's street parking, but we only have street parking on one side. That street only permits it on the left side, is it? So we don't have enough parking, so right now, we're still like, we still struggle, but I feel like this is going to be overcrowded, like she mentioned, when you turn, we're not going to be able to see the traffic, and I am concerned of safety. I also have kids. We've been family-based community, you know, they've been very welcoming to me and other families, single families, it's okay, but eight rooms, I don't think there's going to have two cars, you know, there's going to be a lot of traffic, it's going to be a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else now? Don't hesitate. Okay. We will close to the public.
Thank you. If I, if I just may respond to some of those comments. So, a lot of the comments we heard related to the fact that this is a duplex, the size of the structure, the location, that it's going to be inconvenient, that it'll change the character of the neighborhood. We heard comments about lack of parking on the street, safety and views of traffic on the turn, noise. We also heard a claim that this would somehow raise the taxes for neighboring properties. So in terms of the duplex and the size, this, this is permitted in the zone. This is, this is a single-family and two-family zone, so I, you know, the neighbors living within 200 feet, they've been notified about this, this project, they have every right to be heard and make their concerns heard. I think they all adequately did that, spoke articulately, and made their concerns heard to this board, but the fact of the matter is, this isn't a use variance, we're seeking a permitted use in the two, in a two-family home in the R7 zone. In addition, the size complies with all of the bulk requirements. This isn't an overly high building, it, it's a two-story building, it doesn't, it doesn't exceed the height requirement, it doesn't exceed the lot coverage requirement, it doesn't receive, exceed the floor area ratio requirement. This is an appropriate-sized building for the lot in an appropriate location. In terms of the comments as to parking and to traffic, we, we comply and in fact exceed the parking requirements. There is onsite parking, so in terms of the street parking that is concerned, we're not taking away any street parking that currently exists on this street. The, we're actually increasing the availability of parking for this site. In terms of, in terms of the claim that this could increase the noise, these are, these are going to be residences, we're not opening a restaurant or nightclub, it's just going to be two, two more residences. And then finally, to kind of bring it back to the actual relief, we're seeking, we're seeking relief for frontage on Lilian Street. All of the public commenters are living on Henry Street, so I would submit to the board that they're not actually impacted by the variance that we're seeking along Lilian Street, not the excessive compliance that we have along Henry Street. So I, I completely sympathize with the fact that they, they don't want to change the character of the neighborhood, but I would submit, we're not changing the character of the neighborhood. In the zone that they live in, this type of use, this type of structure is absolutely permitted in the zone on this size lot, and for that reason, we think that an approval for this one variance, frontage along Lilian Street, is appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, board questions, comments, or motion?
I have a question. So is it a, are you seeking a C1 variance or a C2?
I believe we're, we're seeking a C, C1 is for hardship.
Hardship.
Yeah, I would say we're seeking a C2. This is particular suitability in furthering the purposes of a municipal land use law.
Any other questions?
Let me just, so there was a question previously about the driveways separation requirements. So there's two requirements. One is that it has to be 25 feet from the corner, which it complies. I think it's about 50 feet from the corner. And then there's a requirement, actually, I'll ask the engineer to confirm this. There's a requirement that the two driveways on the site be separated by 50 feet. It looks to me, doing my kind of quick measurements there, it looked to me like they're at least 50 feet apart.
The plans indicate 53 feet.
Oh, okay, there was a dimension, I couldn't see it. It looks exactly, that it was a little bit above that.
Right, 53 feet.
And then I'll, I'll make, you know, one suggestion that the board may want to think about. So I do understand that the, the application complies with the residential site improvement standards for parking. I just wonder, from a practical perspective, like on the one side, for example, you have the, I guess, double-stacked parking, you know, that's going to require the homeowners to kind of move the cars back and forth. You know, is there a way where, for, for both of these units, where you can have three cars of side by side, so you don't have to have that shuffling every morning of the, of the park, of the, of the cars?
Well, one is for the driveway on the left side there. It's basically the situation of when you have, like what I've got where I live, you've got a two-car garage, and you can park one car, things behind that, so that you, your residents are generally going to be in those front two spots. When you have a visitor, that's when you're going to have somebody parking behind them.
No, I, I understand that. I just wonder, it's a suggestion, I think something like that might be... Any one of these units could easily have more than two cars.
They're teenagers.
And if that happens, exactly. I mean, we have three drivers, and we have three cars, so we do the morning shuffle. If, that, I don't have, I don't have, I personally don't have the ability to avoid that due to the width of my lot, but here, you do have a wide lot, so that's, if you could, if it's something you might want to look at, instead of having it set up so you're stacked, you can have them side by side with a little adjustment to the, to the site plan, and still comply with the impervious, you might want to look into that.
I'd be curious as to what the, the other residents of the area would think of that. That's, would be my concern.
I, I think if, you know, on the one side, you have it so that the curb cut, you know, the parking, the kind of, or the parking area kind of widens a little bit as you come into the lot.
Right, right.
And I will, I, I'm not suggesting you have to sit here and design it on the fly, but if, if the board was inclined to approve this, that, you know, looking into that might be something you might want to do.
I would submit, that's a, that's a discussion for the board to have.
Well, we did have an application on another board at this similar situation where they were stacking cars, and they made a cutout on the side of the driveway, so, so you didn't have to, I mean, you... We can sit here and theorize all we want, but it's a pretty big inconvenience if someone's parked next to the garage and someone else has to get out of the house and move a car.
I think I might recall the, the application you're referencing, and if I'm not mistaken, that application involved four cars stacked in a line, whereas this would only have two cars stacked in a line, so I do think there's a bit of a distinction between, between those two.
Well, you said you had room for, parking for six cars between the two units, so...
Right, so it would be, it would be, if you, if you look at the driveway to the left, you'd have two parked all the way in, and then two could fit behind it. So you'd have, you'd only have two cars stacked. And if it's a family living there, everyone is familiar with the morning shuffle, if, if it's necessary. But again, if it, you know, if it's something that this board requires that we widen the driveway, but I, you know, that...
That's, up to the board, other people have ideas and opinions, too. I think Mr. Healy was just trying to give you the benefit of, you know, you have the land, maybe there's a, another solution to stacking cars.
Yeah, and to be fair to this applicant, I think that other application, which I think was before this board, that situation was, there was a lot more stacking involved, and that application, they were not proposing to comply with the residential site improvement standards, and actually told the board that the second unit, they were, had designed it so that the second unit had to park on the street. And the board basically told them, no, park, you know, have all the parking on your site. So, you know, this is not the exact same situation, that's why my suggestion was a little bit softer than on the last application.
No, but I think your suggestion was well-intentioned. You, we heard from the residents about the conditions of the, of the two streets, so backing out into the street to move cars around, you know, could be interpreted as exasperating that. You don't want to do it, you comply with the standards, there's nothing really we can do. Of course, again, it was a suggestion. Any other comments, questions, motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We approve Gabriel Mercado and Luzila Mercario Espera. The, grant the application with, with a condition that, Mark, you're going to have to help me with wording on this. The township engineer, what were we going to...
Well, I, I don't think you even have to address chapter 330.
No?
That's just not even, frankly, that's not in your jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, again, I don't think you have to mention that, if, if...
Okay. Any other conditions anybody wants to add? Otherwise, that's my... Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll just say quickly, I understand and sympathize with the public and their comments. I don't think, however, that the variance for the frontage really has a lot to do with the things that they're concerned about. They might be better served by talking to their ward council person, or going to a council meeting to talk about the parking situation and the traffic. You know, maybe there are remediations that the township can do that way, but I, I don't, I don't see that this variance blocks any views in the street. You said setbacks are all met. That implies that there's a site triangle at the corners, and it, it is a permitted application or permitted use. Are no more comments?
Cheryl Batia? I'm going to say yes. However, I would like to say, I, I sympathize with the residents, but as Mr. Thomas, Chairman Thomas indicated, based on the variance, it's, it's solely on the frontage, and it is a permitted use, so I am going to vote yes. Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Okay, as Cheryl just indicated, I also have, I, I understand the insurance, but Bernie so indicated and so eloquently, this is a permitted use, so ends are sort of tied, so I'm going to say yes.
Michael Doherty?
Yes.
And Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the final application? 64 Casa Essencia, LLC ZBA 21, OOO 27, preliminary final major site plan with a D variance, in which the applicant seeks to build 12 townhouse units at 64 Norma Avenue Somerset Block 234, lots 3 to 7 in the O...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. As you indicated, this is an application on behalf of 64 Casa, which involves the construction, or proposes the construction of 12 units on a vacant parcel of land. There are numerous bulk variances and D variances that we will be seeking. By way of background, this application was filed in November of 2021. After it was filed, we had numerous meetings with township staff. They had some concerns about the original application. What we are presenting to you this evening is as a result of the applicant working with the staff to come up with a plan which we felt was the best plan for this project. Tonight, I have the ability to call five witnesses, actually, four witnesses. I probably will not call my traffic consultant unless the board has any traffic issues. We submitted a report. The report is pretty straightforward, and the, there are really no traffic concerns with this application, but he is here, and if the board wants to hear from him, we'll be happy to call him. I do intend to call my site engineer, my architect, and my planner to present the application. I will try to go through it as quickly as I can, but try to cover all the points that I need to cover to... I need to cover to meet my burden of proof. Having said that, I will start my application with Mr. Adelson.
Please raise your hand, do you sort of follow the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and your business address.
Richard Adelson with the firm of Frank H., with the firm of Frank H. Lehrer Associates, 101 South Harrison Street, East Orange, New Jersey.
Mr. Adelson, what is your occupation?
I am a professional engineer. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, bachelor of science and a master's of science in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, I've been doing this for.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Adelson, your firm, under your direction, prepared the site plan that is the subject of this application, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you describe the subject property and the existing surrounding land uses?
Sure, certainly. So, we're looking at an aerial survey from Google of the subject property outlining that with the hand on the screen. The property is block 234, lots three through seven. It is a seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square foot parcel that fronts on Norma and Franklin. Property is, has the school across the street to the north, it has an old, empty office building just to the south, an apartment building immediately adjoining us also to the south, and then some, a mixture of single-family and multifamily houses across the street, across Franklin.
Okay, was this aerial submitted as part of the application?
This, this was not.
Okay, can we have them marked as A1, please?
Same one, thank you.
And what is the size of the subject parcel?
Seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square feet.
Okay, and what's the topography of the site?
So, the site slopes from the, the south side of Norma down to Franklin, oh, significantly, about twenty feet grade across the site.
And can you describe the Franklin Boulevard at, at the subject properties, is it a straight roadway or is it curved?
Franklin Boulevard is predominantly straight, we're on the straightaway section coming off, coming out from the school, and then at the very southerly end of our frontage, it starts, enters into a curve as it approaches Hamilton.
Can you indicate to the board what we are proposing on the subject property?
Sure, let me flip sheets. Okay, so, what we're looking at is Franklin Avenue along the right side of the sheet, Norma to the bottom of the sheet. We are proposing an entrance into a circular roadway with one, two, three, four, five buildings around the circle. Coming in off of Norma, the road is about fourteen hundred feet long with about eleven thousand square feet of pavement, we have 12 units around that circle. Road is constructed with porous pavement, I mean, again, coming in off of, coming in off of, off of Norma, driveway access is driveway setback to provide for a car parked in the driveway plus one in the garage, giving us a total of thirty-eight parking spaces, including the visitor spaces, we have visitor spaces in the middle of the circle as well as two handicap spaces on the sides.
Okay, so each of the 12 residential units will have a garage and the ability to park one car behind the car that's in the garage, which would meet the RSIS standards, is that correct?
Some of the units actually have two-car garages, can actually have four cars, but yes.
Okay, okay, and, and then there's also visitor parking in the circle.
That is correct.
And the parking that we are providing does meet, in fact, RSIS standards?
That is correct.
Okay, please continue.
Okay. The road we are providing is 28 feet wide as we come in off of Norma, it does neck down a little bit to 27, which is more than adequate and also conforms with RSIS for circulation of a, on a road. We are proposing a recreation area with approximately forty-nine hundred square feet of space, forty-eight, nine, fifty in the corner, we have a retaining wall along the edge to keep that as a level area, so we have some open recreation space, we also have some other areas and green spaces around the site.
And at this time, the space for the recreation is basically an open field, but it is capable, if there are children that are residing there, that we can put a totlot or other things that may be an amenity that's needed for the residents, correct?
Either a tot, either a playground or passive recreation or some.
Picnic tables or?
Or, or exercise equipment.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you indicate to the board what kind of lighting we're providing?
Sure, let's go, let's stop and talk about drainage because that's next on the page.
Okay.
Okay, so as I indicated, drainage for this site, we're proposing to use a porous pavement system that gives us our water quality and our stormwater management. The intent is to drain the roof leaders into the, I'm not sure. That's better. That gives us the ability to drain the water into the pavement and into the stone bed reservoir underneath it, it holds it there, it percolates into the ground at whatever rate it takes, it's designed with an underdrain system because we are in a shell site. While we have done test pits here, in some place, we did two test pits for stormwater disposal, one passed as, as percolating, perking, and the other one didn't, therefore we'll provide detention, we'll provide underdrains, we'll get, we'll, whatever, whatever can go in, will go into the ground to percolate, the rest of it will have, will, you know, be drained slowly after filtering.
And the stormwater management system has been reviewed by CME?
Yes, they had a few comments, but nothing that we can't address.
Okay. Now, can you jump to lighting?
I certainly can. Okay. The site lights, we're looking at light fixtures that kind of resemble hats, those are located around, around the site to provide a nice uniform lighting levels of one to two-foot candles around the site, not, not lighting, lighting primarily the road and along the houses.
And there is no light spillage off the subject property, is that correct?
No, the, the light spillage is controlled by distance and directional fixtures.
Okay, and in this case, we are proposing, since these are individual residents, that garbage will be handled by the individual residents, there will be no dumpster enclosure or anything of that nature. On garbage pickup days, the residents will put their garbage out to the curb and it will be picked up, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and obviously, the, the road system or the, the entry roadway and the road around the property is sufficient width to handle a garbage truck?
So, well, we didn't look at a garbage truck, we did look at a fire engine, we looked at a hundred-foot aerial ladder, which is one of the larger design vehicles that we use for fire departments, it accommodates the aerial ladder without a problem, fire, garbage truck is much shorter, much more maneuverable, garbage truck has no trouble maneuvering around the circle.
Okay. Can you indicate to the board the landscaping that we are proposing in conjunction with this project?
Certainly. Is that one opening? I missed that one. Okay, so we are doing, and the site is partially wooded as it currently exists, and we're going to have to remove trees across primarily along Franklin's, Franklin, some of the trees are larger, but a lot of the trees are not in great shape, I was out there today to look at them to see how they were blooming out, and some of them are not in great shape at all. Matter of fact, a couple of them are outright dead. So, we are removing, I believe 27 trees are removed as part of this application, that requires a tree replacement by ordinance of 90 trees, and if you look, you'll see that we have, are doing relatively dense plantings all the way around the site, trees, various shade trees, a mixture of oaks, maples, pines, tulips, oak berries, dogwoods, red buds, been very nice, nice mixture of trees around the site. In addition to that, we have clusters of shrubbery at the front entrances, boxwood, hydrangea, inkberries, rhododendrons, pharea, nice seasonal interest, good color, season, year-round, year-round color, so extensive landscaping on this site. Remainder of the site is lawn and will be mowed.
Now, you indicated that the topography of this site is basically from going to, the high point being the left side of the diagram as we're looking at it going down toward Franklin Boulevard.
That is correct.
Are there going to be any retaining walls or anything else to deal with the topography?
So, we're building a plateau around the circle, and that's being closed off with a retaining wall along the, at the corner of Norma and Franklin, retaining wall is set back, so it's not really visible in that regard.
Can you please review with the board, the, there, as I indicated in my opening, there are some D variances, but there are also C variances?
Sure.
Can you just briefly review what the C variances are in conjunction with this application?
Okay, so we have a front yard variance along Franklin, forty feet is required along Franklin, thirty feet is required elsewhere along, so we have thirty-point-nine feet to the tips of the walls, you'll see in the renderings, there are walls that project out separating the units and the walk, and the, and the area common space in the back, so we're thirty, those are thirty-point-nine feet from, along Franklin, so we're asking for just under a 10-foot setback variance for that.
And the reason there's an enhanced setback on Franklin Boulevard is because Franklin Boulevard is a county road and requires by ordinance an enhanced setback, it, it actually meets the setback requirements if this property was not on a county road, is that correct?
That is correct, and if you look down the road, you'll know this, you would note that many of the properties do not have 40-foot setbacks on Franklin in this area, including the one just to our south. Next variance, which the architect and the planner will talk more about, is a flare air ratio, we have a flare air ratio, flare area ratio variance required is point-two-five and proposed is point-four-two, and the last variance we have as a bulk variance is a lot coverage, an impervious coverage, 45% is permitted, we are 886 square feet over at 46.2%, and that's a function of setbacks in driveways and pavement area.
Is, is the width of the, of the roadway also a variance?
The width of the roadway, I believe, is a design waiver.
Design waiver.
I believe thirty, I believe the ordinance for townhouses, if that applies, asks for a 30-foot wide road, we're at 28 feet and 27 feet depending upon where you're measuring, as I indicated, I believe we comply with RSIS, so that's a separate question.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and let's start with the CME engineering report, there are numerous comments, I think his report consists of seven or eight pages, eight pages, can we, in essence, comply with everything in that report?
Yes, I mean, there are a couple of things where they ask for testimony that we should hit. First one I have marked is number 15, which talks about a conflict between units four and five, this is unit four and unit five, he asked, CME asks that we look at the conflict between the car backing out of unit five and unit four and the curvature of our driveway, we can straighten that out a little bit, but honestly, we think that works, we don't, we don't consider that a problem. Next item he asks about is snow removal, we do have places we can tuck snow for normal storms, like we had this so winter, which hadn't absolutely none, we have areas, the end of the driveway, we have areas in the park, at the entrance of the park, and tucked in front of units where we can stack snow, we also can snack snow on the, stack snow on the islands, and if it gets out of hand, we'll have to truck it off.
Other than those two items to discuss, all of the other items in the CME report you can comply with, and in complying with them, will they in any way change what the board is looking at, or are they just minor technical changes?
Only minor technical changes, the only other comment I wanted to hit on, we had done geotechnical, done a geotechnical investigation since the time this was submitted, and we, one of the, one of the restrictions is groundwater and not having basements within two feet of groundwater, for the most part, we didn't find any groundwater on the site when we did the test pits earlier this month, which is a direct read month for test, for storm, for groundwater, however, we did find test, we did find groundwater in a test pit located just south of unit, sorry, of unit eighty, unit eight, in that, in that, to accommodate that, we're going to shorten that basement from 10 feet depth to eight-foot depth, that will get us our extra cover, get us clear of the groundwater.
Okay, and the police were satisfied with everything, John House wanted some no parking signs.
No objection.
And obviously, I, we have no objection to doing that, and Mr. Healy's report, as it touches on engineering comments, see if we.
We talked about refuse.
Street width, we talked about.
Talked about the fact that we are less than 25 feet of setback, but we have enough room for parking in our driveways under the, for the handicap space, we provide a five-foot and an eight-foot aisle, we've, we've got an 11-foot handicap space and an eight-foot handicap space, you're allowed to either do an eight-foot area, an eight-foot space and an eight-foot walkway or an eight, or an 11-foot space and an eight-foot walkway regardless, 16 feet either way. We have been advised by the various ADA folks that the 11 and five are preferred because if you do eight, eight and eight, people park in the middle eight on the, on the crosshatch area, and if you give them five feet, they don't try to park there, so.
Okay, and obviously, Mr. Healy has some comments that are non-engineering related, we will deal with them as we get on to the other witnesses.
Yes.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Any board questions?
Yes, back to fire prevention, number one, I don't understand, it says same comment, the architectural drawings, and then they talk about a bathroom in the basement.
I'll give, I'm going to give that one to the architect.
All right.
It'll make more sense when you see the architectural plans.
Anybody else?
I will call my architect.
Actually, one, one question for the engineer, so, just so the board understands, so you'd mentioned that refuse would be picked up, presumably privately?
Privately, correct.
And that there's no dumpster, so I'm guessing what the plan would be is that each resident would put their trash at their.
Roll out containers in that before, I would assume.
At, like at their, at each of their driveways?
Yes.
And have you reviewed the plan to see if a refuse truck, can refuse truck can go through the site?
We, we, we. We, we reviewed it for a fire truck. A refuse truck is significantly smaller and more maneuverable, so it's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
Along that subject, does everybody get their own refuse person? I mean, or is it the same refuse company?
It would be, it would be the same refuse company that would handle the entire complex.
Yes. We don't, we don't need 12 trucks driving through.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and your business address for the record?
Banafsha Solthani, 302 City Place, Edgewater, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Ms. Solthani, since this is going to be minutes being prepared, can you spell your first name and also spell your last name?
Sure. First name, B-A-N-A-F-S-H-E-H. Last name, S-O-L-T-A-N-I.
Okay. Ms. Solthani, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am not a licensed architect. I am an associate with Rafi Design. Adam Rafi is the licensed architect.
And the licensed architect is the one who prepared the plans that are subject to this application?
That is correct.
And you worked with him in designing the plans?
Yes.
And are familiar with them?
I am familiar with the plans.
Okay. And the plan that we show to the board is a colored rendering of the submission that we made of the architectural plans. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Can we have that marked as A2?
Yes, it's A2.
Now, as was indicated by Mr. Adelson, the way we have designed this project is a series of buildings. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And how many buildings?
There are five buildings.
Okay.
12 units.
And I believe there's two one-bedroom and 10 two-bedrooms. Is that correct?
There are.
What's that change?
So, units one through four and unit 12 are two bedrooms. Unit five is a two-bedroom. Unit six is a two-bedroom. Unit seven and unit 10 are a one-bedroom. Unit eight and nine are two bedrooms. Unit 11 is a two-bedroom.
Okay, so there's two one-bedrooms. Okay. And can you indicate the average size and range of the ones and twos? I know they, they vary a little bit, but what the average size of the units are.
Michelle Lanford, can I just interrupt real quick? So, we're all kind of looking at each other here. So, you're presenting architectural testimony, not a, she's not a licensed architect. So, you know, I'm looking to our board attorney as to what, I'm, I'm going to guess that perhaps she could present things that are factual and on those plans, but if it gets into any opinions.
I'm not going to ask for any opinions, Mr. Healy. I'm just going to, she worked on the plans. She helped the, the architect who designed it prepare the plans, and I'm going to have her describe what is on the plans, period.
Yes, she's not a licensed professional, so we can't accept her as an expert witness, but we could accept as what she's testifying as facts. For example, she's testifying about the bedrooms right now, how many bedrooms are located in the units. Those are facts that she could testify as to, as she helped prepare these plans.
So if I ask a question that, that takes an opinion, you won't be able to answer it then, correct?
I can answer in regards to what are the facts that are located on the plans. And I represent again Adam Rafi over here.
Hear it in front of other boards?
No.
If, if, if the board has a concern over that and wants Mr. Rafi to appear, obviously, we can adjourn and I can bring him back. And it's up to the chairman, the board, if they want to hear from the architect who prepared the plans, we can have him available at the next available meeting.
Well, just speaking, and just speaking to timing, I mean, it is already 9:30, and you do have six board members instead of seven, and you have a use variance.
I, I understand all of those things. I was hoping to complete the presentation this evening. I was hoping to, my client was willing to proceed to a vote this evening with the six board members. But again, if the board wants to hear from Mr. Rafi, we will gladly come back.
My position would be is, I don't ever remember us not hearing from a certified architect. I don't think we have any reason to set a precedent and do differently now. So I would say, bring a licensed architect.
Okay.
I would agree.
I agree. Most of you have an opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
I always have an opinion. I would agree. I'm sure you're very well-versed and technically competent, but I would just be concerned if there's an appeal. And for taking testimony from someone who doesn't have a license, it could be viability on us.
I, and, and I don't necessarily disagree with the board's conclusion.
Okay, then we'll, we're date.
And, and I can't present my planning testimony until the architect testifies, so at this juncture, I think we need to stop.
Right.
So, May 18th is the next available date?
On an unrelated note, Ms. Solthani, you dropped a card or something below your seat while you were sitting.
Yes, I have.
You see it there on, yeah, on your left?
I can be there. Just going to confirm that the architect.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to, Mr. Chairman, so, over here. So, just, just to have, maybe make a little more progress tonight, we did have testimony from the engineer. Do you want to open it up? I'm not, I'm not sure if you open it up to the public for questions of the engineer, so just.
We have generally been waiting until they.
He'll be back at the next meeting.
Why don't we leave it for the 18th? If for some reason the architect is not available, then I will reach out to you, Mr. Healy, and we'll probably have to figure something else out, but hopefully, he is out of the country now, but hopefully he will be back by the 18th. Or we will have another licensed architect to testify.
Okay. So I moved it to May 18th with no notification needed.
Okay. If your recommendation is to open it to the public for the engineer, we can do that and be done with it, you know?
It's up to the board. I just figured since we're here and he's here.
Is she going to come back or, or he? I'm sorry.
I think, other than this, he's available, other than this lady here, I think everybody else here is part of my team, so if you want to open it up in case she has any questions.
We will open to the public then. This part, portion would be questions, not, not an opinion or, okay, we will need your name though.
My name is Belinda Hall, 491. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Can you please try to speak into the microphone?
Why did, why did she use my microphone?
Well, I'm really excited that you're actually developing that land. But my question is, would this 12-unit development prevent any additional new construction on Norma Avenue? In terms of the roads being opened again, would there be a moratorium on the roads? You know, if new construction was approved to be built on Norma?
As part of this project, the municipal, or the board engineer has indicated, we need to upgrade the water main up past our engines to our driveway and that we need to repave the lower section of Norma. Nothing beyond the frontage of this property.
And for the board, would that, would, would there be like moratorium in terms of opening up the road again within a year or two years down the road or a couple of months, you know, once this built?
If there is another application for development on Norma, that application would have to stand on its own, and if they need to open up the road, they would have to open it. But once we do what we have to do, then we're done and we're out of there, and we are repaving along the frontage of our property down to Franklin Boulevard.
Right. I guess that would be something that the board would have to answer then in reference to, it would not be a problem in terms of new construction coming to Norma, in terms of the roads being opened again?
I'm having a little trouble understanding the question.
Because in some townships, they put moratoriums on the roads in terms of opening up, how many times you can open that road for new piping underneath. So I just want to make sure that there would not be a problem in that area.
The, the times that I've heard where the township has placed moratoriums on opening up the road relates to the township's schedule for paving. So usually, when the town, township has a, has a kind of rotating schedule, and if Norma, let's say, was, was, was scheduled to be repaved next year, then there's, I think it's a three-year moratorium on when the road can be opened up. But it doesn't necess, it doesn't relate to an individual development application for a particular piece of property.
Okay.
So I think that was why I was having a little bit of issues understanding.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any? Okay, we'll close. And you've got the date set, you have no further notification. And any other business? If not, and a motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.